Hello and welcome to the May 22, 2017 Regular Fayetteville City Council Meeting. At this time, I'd like to introduce my friend, Dr. Gregory Perkins, who's the Associate Pastor over at Mount Pisgah, to lead us with an invocation. If everybody would please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Perkins.
Will you bow your heads as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings, to sustain us, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in this useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from the boundless and the gracious nature that you invoke. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor and for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live, and work, and around our beloved city of Fayetteville. It is our most blessed name and your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Dr. Perkins, tell us something about your ministry and what you do at Mount Pisgah.
Well, I'm honored mayor and city council to work as an associate to the Reverend Dr. John D. Fuller Senior, to which many in our community know extremely well. He took on this awesome task of going to Mount Pisgah to help a struggling congregation regain hope and strength and provide shared vision of ministry across this community. And so, I thought it not robbery to go and assist my pastor in this great undertaking. And we're pleased to be a part of this great community and to share the love of Christ with all.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for joining us.
To include being the home church of our interim Chief of Police.
Oh, by the way.
Oh, by the way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. God bless you.
I would like to draw attention to a member that's joining us this evening from the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and that is Ms. Rebecca Mitchell. Rebecca, you want to tell us something about yourself and something about the youth council?
(Inaudible) Rebecca Mitchell. Okay. Can you hear me? Good? Okay. So, I'm Rebecca Mitchell. For the 2017-2018 school year, I'll be the Chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. I am currently a junior at 71st High School.
Okay. Tell me, what do you enjoy most about youth council?
I enjoy the fact that we are a family, and so, we get to make an impact for the community and be able to be this diverse group of youth leaders.
And the youth council, how many different high schools are involved, do you know?
Multiple different high schools. There are 11 high schools.
Okay. And if somebody wants to be involved next year in the youth council, how do they do that?
So, they will be recommended by their principal, and they'll be able to join.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, for joining us.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to Councilmember Art for a special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite Ms. April Pittman and three young ladies to come up to the front. They are Autumn McDonald, Mackenzie Jones, and Sammy Klein. And as they come down, they are here representing the Future Farmers of America, and if you didn't know it, especially all you young high schoolers and folks listening, agriculture is still the number one industry in the state of North Carolina. And so, we're very proud of them, and FFA is a great organization. I got a blue jacket like that somewhere at home.
Yeah, me too.
And learned a lot of great lessons in the FFA. You'd be surprised. So, what I want to do is I'm going to turn it over to you, and I guess, Autumn, you're going to be the spokeswoman. You're going to talk to us about the Graves Creek FFA Agricultural Issues Team and some work that you're doing on agricultural and forestry nuisance issues.
I'm going to let them take it away, but I just wanted to say thank you for allowing them to present tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Autumn McDonald, and I'm part of the Graves Creek FFA and Agricultural Issues Team. These are my fellow teammates, Mackenzie Jones and Sammy Klein. For upcoming contests, we decided to do research and present on a controversial agriculture issue that is in our local and state area. We would like to talk to you today about State Law 2017-11 entitled Agriculture and Forestry Nuisance Remedies. This law clarifies how lawsuits may be handled against agriculture and forestry operations, especially hog farms. The law places limits on the amount of damages that plaintiffs may seek through a lawsuit against farms, agricultural companies, and logging operations.
This new state law affects anyone living near an agricultural or forestry operation. It also affects farmers and agricultural businesses. There are several benefits to this law. First, the law does not prevent anyone from pursuing legal action against the forestry or agricultural companies. For example, lawsuits may still be filed for negligence, trespassing, or personal injury. Second, the law does not take away a plaintiff's right to sue for nuisances. Anyone may still sue for economic or market damages for up to the market value of property that is affected. For example, if you own retail properties next to a hog farm in which the smell prevents clients, you may sue for the economic loss up to the market value of your income and properties. Finally, this law protects farmers who live with the constant fear of being sued and bankrupt for predatory lawsuits. It decreases the severity for which farmers can be sued for effects of their operations beyond their control, for example, the smell of hog farms.
Hearing all the positives about this new state law, there are some negatives. First, it appears to bail out large corporations. For example, as soon as this law passed, it affected all current lawsuits filed in the courts, including hundreds of lawsuits for the Smithfield. Another downside to this issue is plaintiffs, is that if the instance is temporary, only rental value can be the amount sued for the property affected. Some North Carolinians worry that this law could support the production of contaminant water and polluted air because there are no less monetary penalties for nuisances caused by agricultural operations. In general, this law is seen by many as a restriction to their rights, while it is also seen as a blessing to agricultural operations.
The Agricultural and Forestry Nuisance Remedies Law is an issue that affects people in all areas. It has the power to place limits upon a plaintiff seeking a lawsuit and protects the rights of corporations. This law can affect the daily lives of individuals in a community and protects corporations' rights to establish a place of business. There are multiple angles that you can approach when discussing this bill, but our objective is to convey the pros and cons of the agriculture and forestry nuisance remedies in an unbiased way. Hopefully, we have completed this goal for you today and made you think about this now state law. If you are concerned about this law, you should contact your local representative. We would like to thank you for taking time out of your day and allowing us to present you with this information. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I did have a question. I wanted to ask you, have you worked this, have you discussed this with our local delegation at the General Assembly? Okay. Well, I would encourage you to do that. It's a big issue for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Art. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Larry Wright with some information about the STEM program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give a little bit of information about the STEM Summer Job Program. We want to just thank Assistant City Manager Jay Reinstine, also City Councilman Kirk Devier, myself, attended a presentation and briefing and had an opportunity to say some words of encouragement to a youth group. This is a partnership between the city, PWC, Cumberland County Schools, and private sector businesses. Interviews occurred this past Saturday, and close to 50 rising seniors were interviewed for 10 positions in the city and 10 positions with PWC and three private sector positions. Youth will be working in human resources, parks and recreation, financing, engineering, and infrastructure, IT, and transit. Students will begin their six weeks 32-hour week job on June 19 through July 28. This is the second year of this program, supported by city council and PWC. And just to let you know that the city council voted unanimously on this STEM Summer Job Program, which is a great success. We have twice as many children this year than we had last year, and it's growing. I'm so excited, the vision for summer jobs and working children, to challenge them in areas that will spark interest in their lives for the future. So, my hats are off to the city council, Kirk Devier, myself, for heading this project up, and also the city staff that is working so diligently to make this a great success. So, thank you. We look forward to a great summer for our youth program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Good work on that. At this time, I'd like to recognize, actually, if Principal Colbert would join me up front, I will turn the microphone over to Councilmember Jensen.
The Pine Forest Green Team was formed this year by Mrs. H. and Mr. Linwood Starling. The two envisioned a group of young adults that cared enough about their environment to spend the time after school for recycling. This year, after forming this group, Starling found a national contest to practice good stewardship and the efforts towards a grand prize of $20,000. The students were encouraged to bring in recycling. With all that recycling coming in, the students of the Green Team had their work cut out for them. They volunteered hours of their time on Tuesday afternoons to sort plastic bottles and aluminum cans. After a month of sorting, weighing pounds of recycling, and getting the support of the school and the community, Pine Forest Green Team pushed through first place, winning the competition, and bringing $20,000 to their school.
How much?
$20,000.
First off, I would like to say we had a lot of help. There was a school out in Texas that came in first place. I'm a wedding singer. I should be able to handle this. And my teacher, who I'm going to bring up here, I'm going to take the microphone back to him, he said, "Mr. Colbert, we just moved into second place, and our community rallied." When I say "our community rallied," the Pine Forest community always rallies. But we sought help from around Fayetteville. Graves Creek, that FFA director over there gave us, Ms. Herzog has taught me in the last year, it's not trash. If it comes in a bag, I've always called it trash. I think I've got some of Councilmember Jensen's trash, but it's actually recyclable. So, they educated me, and we had schools that shared with us. We had our families that came in and helped these kids in this cause, and it was a very positive thing. And I want to reach out to Fayetteville Observer because we don't get enough positive news in our schools. Anytime something negative happens, it always seems to be there. But we've got some outstanding, fantastic children in our public school system, and I brought a lot of them here, as many we could get on the activity bus tonight. So, I want to say thank you to Fayetteville and to the council. And I'd like to take this microphone back here to Mr. Starling and let him tell you how his kids did.
Hi. Thank you. The kids did an amazing job. They would bring in recyclables from home until the bus drivers were tired of seeing it in the mornings. They would stand at the bus stop with bags. The parents were dropping it off as fast as they could. We had a collection site behind the school. They dropped it off over spring break. Teachers helped collect. Pretty much, a lot of our classrooms looked like recyclable bins because they were just piled up until we could get it collected. The kids worked very hard. Teachers jumped in, helped us sort it, and the Pepsi would send down auditors and come and check our progress, and then finally, we won first place.
And I'd like to point out two more faculty members. Erica Thames, that was a big part. She had her hands literally in the recyclables, along with Dinah Herzog. Our kids, he's going to let us take a picture, so if all of y'all could stand up at this time.
Come on down front.
Ms. Thames, Ms. Herzog, Ms. Starling, come on up. Jewel McDonald.
Mr. Mayor, was that a nationwide competition or just a local state competition?
Mr. Colbert, nationwide. Mr. Colbert, I've got councilmembers up here saying that you can sing.
(Inaudible)
I'll give you some local television attention if you'd like to come do something real quick.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Maybe next time. Councilmember Jensen, we also have some senior certificates for our FCYC members.
Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and recognize the seniors in our Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. This is our third year of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and we have quite a few here with us today, and I want to remind everybody that they came back from states. We do have two people on the state board, and we got the most diverse council in the state. So, we will move ahead with that, and then we'll, I think they have some speakers that they want to speak. Okay. First one is DeKari Davis. Come up and get your certificate. Charlotte Jackson. Priya Shaw. Jenna Neighbors. And Alana Harris.
Let's come back here again. I would like to also recognize Crystal Glover, who should have "Saint" in front of her name. Crystal is the advisor for the group.
Do you have, Crystal, would you like to take the mic?
Awesome. We're going to have three of our seniors come up. These individuals, these young people have been with me for all three years, so they actually helped to reestablish the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. So, they are my babies, and I'm so excited for them to take this journey and go off to college. And I have three of my officers that are going to come up and do their farewell to the council. So, come on, we'll have Josh Jensen first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and other distinguished council members. My name is Joshua Jensen, and I am the Sergeant-at-Arms of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and I will be attending NC State in the fall. But before I focus on my future, I need to reflect on my past. FCYC has been a part of my life for the past three years, and during this time, I've attended state and national leadership conferences where I have been able to network with other youth leaders as well as local elected officials. I have volunteered several times across the community, developed my leadership skills, and worked tirelessly to help Fayetteville thrive. In addition to impacting my life personally, FCYC works very hard to positively impact our community. This past October, we volunteered to help with Hurricane Matthew relief, planned a Next Step Teen Symposium to prepare the youth to take their next step in life, and much more. Another way I've seen the youth council impact others is the way it helps its members. The youth council members are high schoolers from all across the county who enter as eager teens and leave as experienced and driven leaders. I cannot express how thankful I am for the endless support FCYC receives from the city council. Your support and concern for the youth is very admirable. Thank you for allowing me to be in this incredible organization, and I will forever cherish the time I spent and the skills I acquired from the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. Thank you.
My name is, excuse me, my name is DeKari Davis, and I'm currently the historian of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. Let me take you guys back. I want to tell you about when I first heard of FCYC and about its reestablishment. I'd heard about the youth council at school shortly after I'd lost reelection to SGA. This is important to mention because I want to talk about how my past failures led to my current success. And it had seemed like a great organization to join, so I did. With low confidence and a fear of talking to people, I joined my sophomore year. And over the years, because of my involvement in FCYC, I've become the man that you see in front of you today, one who has represented the city all across town, all across the state, and across the nation. The person that I've become through the youth council has led me to have the honor of becoming my school's vice president, a junior council for a leadership conference over the summer, a co-chair of the committee to host our very own leadership conference, and also to sit on our very fine Fayetteville City Council. on our very fine Fayetteville City Council. And most of all, I've had the honor of being a recognizable member that represents the youth council by attending every event that we have been a part of. Over the years, I've learned that leadership is not a trait that you were born with, it's a trait that is passed down from great leaders themselves. So I want to thank the great leaders who have inspired me. I wish to thank my fellow council members for giving me encouragement and making me believe that I could do anything. I also wish to thank Ms. Crystal Glover for changing my life and giving me skills and traits that will last me a lifetime, and for also placing me on a path of a successful leader. And finally, to the city council for affording me this opportunity. I will always have a place in my heart for the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council because I firmly believe that wherever I go in life, it will be because of the experiences I've had in the last three years. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Charlotte Jackson, and I am currently serving as the Chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. In the fall, I'll be attending our very own Methodist University, and I'll be majoring in human biology. Good evening. Today, I stand here to say that although my time with the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council is coming to an end, I will take the lessons I have learned and the memories I've made with me for the rest of my life. When I joined FCYC three years ago, I was filled with a sense of anticipation for what this organization could do and what my impact on the community could be. With time, I watched this organization grow and become something so much bigger, a group of people who made direct impacts on the organization itself and on Fayetteville as a whole. I still remember our first outreach projects, our first time attending a conference, the first Fayetteville Cumberland Glow Fest, and more recently, our first time hosting a conference for the state youth council. We have learned how to accomplish great tasks together and how to handle the small problems that might have a big impact on our final destination. We have interacted with our community in big and small ways, as well as helping Fayetteville be known on the national level through the National League of Cities. The memories I have made with each of you and the things that each of you have taught me are invaluable and have shaped who I've become. FCYC has become more than an organization, it has become a family who don't always see eye to eye on every issue, but always band together to make great things happen when the time comes. I started as a junior secretary of FCYC my sophomore year, a very different person, someone who was not sure how to take the abilities I had and make an impact on the world around me. This organization is full of people who believed in me, lifted me up, and taught me how to be myself and encourage others to do the same. The past three years, especially the year I've spent as Chair, have taught me that making an impact takes time, dedication, and a genuine love for the people around you. Each project that we complete is a testament for what our organization believes in, and more importantly, all of the aspects that make Fayetteville so great. As the final class of the formative years of FCYC leaves, I would like to challenge the rest of you to keep the torch flying high and to show the world what great, what great things make FCYC worth all of the time and resources that we put into it. I would also like to take this farewell speech as an opportunity to thank Ms. Crystal for her unwavering dedication to turning crazy teenagers into great adults, ones who care about the world around them and who have the tools necessary to make a difference. She has provided direction to our knowledge and a shape to our future. I would like to thank the city council for dedicating resources in order to ensure our success, especially in securing a place to call our own, a home for our family. Without our adult mentors, we would not be able to accomplish things on such a big scale. As the seniors all begin to graduate in the coming weeks, we will all go separate ways into universities around the state, nation, and possibly even the globe. We will join different organizations and spread our wings in different directions, but we will take with us all of the values that FCYC upholds and the skills we have learned on this journey we have taken together. I know that we will all achieve great successes and go on to pursue careers in fields that we love, but I hope that many of us will come back to Fayetteville and continue to make it great as adults. Thank you.
We are all very proud of you. Probably one of the best things this council has done. Councilmember Arp, you have another recognition?
Yes, sir, I do, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who may or may not be aware, we have two high school teams that are playing in the state regional championships. One is the Cape Fear High School Girls Softball Team. And if you know anything about Cape Fear High School softball, even back when I was there, Bill, judging hogs with the FFA, Doris Howard always had a great softball team, and they were always a powerhouse in the state. They're ranked nationally. I think they're number two in the nation right now, and they're undefeated, and they'll be playing in the regional semifinal. If they win that, they'll go to the state championship, so we wished them the very best of luck. Coach Jeff McPhail and the Cape Fear Colts. And over at Terry Sanford, the girls soccer team, the Bulldogs, have an undefeated season, and they're also in the state regional championship. And they'll be playing at home tomorrow night. I think Cape Fear's at home tomorrow night, but Terry Sanford's at home tomorrow night. And again, if they win, they'll have the opportunity to go to the state championship, and they are nationally ranked as well. So we wish both the Colts and the Bulldogs much success tomorrow night as they represent Fayetteville. And David Colbert, you're exactly right, we need to highlight all these great young people and all these great stories that are going on with our youth.
Thank you, Councilmember Arp. At this point, I would like to introduce our city manager, Doug Hewitt, who, by the way, youth council is the gentleman that found you a place to hang out. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Hewitt.
Let me carry it up. Thank you, thank you. Before I begin, though, Mayor, I don't know if everyone in the room actually could see that not only do we, does the council care about the youth council, but our staff member was over here almost in tears with pride and joy. Could we give her a hand as well?
The success of that program relies on the support of council, but the work that she does day in and day out. If you remember that cold first night that we were in Buies Creek with the Astros team, she was up there with a contingent from the youth council as well. I look up, and she's in Washington. I look up, and they're down somewhere else in town. But again, Crystal, wonderful job, great job. But tonight, also, I'd like to recognize excellent work by other members of our staff as well. If Kevin Arada could come up. Mayor, I'm very pleased to say that the city of Fayetteville received first place in Excellence in Communications Award from the North Carolina City County Communicators Association for the city's Hurricane Matthew informational campaign. The city's corporate communications unit promoted extensively the status of city services and weather updates using multiple platforms and methods. The judges commented Hurricane Matthew provided a significant convergence of importance and urgency. The judges also indicated that the Fayetteville team rose to the challenge, possibly saving untold lives while also generating vast amounts of social and traditional media reach. And it is my honor, and I think we have a plaque, yeah, we do, right here, to like, if we could present this to Kevin. Thank you so much, Mayor.
And he does have a few words, and as well, as if you would introduce your special guest as well.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Hewitt. So first, my special guest in the back, where'd they go? My wife back there, Mary Ann, who's always wondering why I'm not home at night, and many of our staff aren't, so she came to watch. And then my son, who's home on break from West Point for summer training, came home to surprise me for my birthday yesterday, so thanks for being here, Patrick. Appreciate it. So certainly a hard act to follow, and I know we got a lot of stuff to cover tonight, but listening to all the great things that the youth council has done here, I'll keep this short, I promise, but you guys have done great things, and thank you for that. Mayor and council, just a couple stats on some of the things that we submitted as part of this award. We certainly didn't expect to get first place, but we're honored that we did. Some of the key things that we had put up during the hurricane, and most of this happened in probably a 36-hour period, and mind you, it happened with about two people who were in the EOC and locked in there all night. The rest of us couldn't get in, as many of you couldn't, in and out of your houses. So a lot of this work happened in the EOC, but the other part of it happened actually from tablets and phones on cellphone chargers and cars because nobody had power. So it was kind of a reduced operation, but we did the best we could. We had set up a special hurricane webpage, which got 34,000 hits just in about a 36-hour period, just looking for information. Put out about 30 press releases in probably a 36-hour period. We usually do one or two. Held about five press conferences that the mayor had pushed us hard on doing to help get information out from both the city and the county. From a social media side, we had about a 20% increase in likes. Our social media page, our Facebook page right now is number two in the state, so we're doing extremely well there, but that helped us get a lot of information out to our residents. And then a couple things that we did too for videos. We usually get 1,000 or two videos for things that we produce. We had done one other thing with the missing man table, which is a tribute to our POWs and MIAs that happened over at Parks and Rec. We usually get 1,000 or two views. It got 390,000 views in about a one-week period. Did another one that Gavin happened to film while I was out taking a break down in the EOC of the FD, the Fire Department from New York, who was saving somebody in front of the Sestel Building. Same thing, that got about 355,000 views. Was shown on several national channels as an example of what not to do, and hopefully did save some lives. And then the other part from our webpage side, 300,000 views over a very short period of time. We usually get about 150,000 views. So we know we got to reach a lot of people. We know we put a lot of work into it, but what I would also say is it happened as a result of a great team effort with the county and a great team effort with the rest of the city departments, because our information's only as good as what we get. So from the Fire Department, the Police Department, Environmental Services, Parks and Rec, all those people doing all that great work provided us all that information and got us to where we were. So that was really what became that, that team effort from the core corporate communications team. So thank you for the opportunity to let us serve you and serve our residents, and we appreciate the honor for this award.
Thank you, Mr. Arada. Congratulations to your team.
Thanks, sir.
And at this time, we have a hurricane update. Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to provide you some updates on the ongoing roadway repairs related to Hurricane Matthew projects. I will provide you some brief updates on Shawcroft, Offing Drive Culvert, Norco Springs Street Bridge, Merrill Lake Road Dam, and the Devonwood Lower Dam. As you know, the temporary culvert was installed ahead of schedule on Shawcroft Road. Multiple options have been considered for the permanent repairs to include the box culvert and the bridge options. The decision for the permanent repairs are on hold, awaiting the results on the hazard classification study for the upstream dam at the Gulf Course. So we're hoping that that decision can be made soon because it's holding us up on the Shawcroft design. But as soon as we hear from that, we have been trying to follow up with the dam safety. As soon as we hear from them, we will be moving forward with a decision.
And who is it that makes that decision?
Dam Safety has been working with the Gulf Course engineers to determine if the, what impacts the dam at the Gulf Course will have on the design that we select for Shawcroft, because we want to make sure that the design that is selected for Shawcroft will not impact the dam in any way. For Offing Drive, three bids have been received for Offing Drive as of last Thursday. The lowest bid was received at $281,000, which is 32% below the estimate that we had projected, which, those are great news. The lowest bidder is Sandy Holling from Roseboro, North Carolina. We plan to bring that bid to you for award next Thursday meeting. We are currently setting up a construction public meeting with the residents the week of June 12. The property owners will be notified by mail, media, and social media with the details of the meeting as soon as we have all those details. The construction is projected to begin on January 14th, pending Eastman acquisitions, and anticipate to be completed and open to traffic by August 14th. On Norco Springs, the design has been completed and we have advertised for bid as of last Friday, May 19th. We expect the bids to be received by June 2nd, and as soon as the bids are received, we'll bring to you for award. On Merrill Lake Dam and Devonwood Lower Dam, we have issued the RFQ for design, and the three submittals have been received from consultants. We expect to have a consultant selected by June 9th. We have received, we have selected a consultant for the project management and the construction oversight contract, and that will be brought to you on Thursday for execution of that contract. And the consultant on that will be Freeze and Nickel, is the same consultant that has been doing the hurricane updates, the roadway repairs. And as it was advertised on the RFQ on January 17th, our intention is to continue with the same consultant for the dam projects. We, like I said, we are bringing that to you on Thursday, May 15th, for award of that contract for professional services. And we encourage you and all of those that are watching today to continue to watch these projects on FayettevilleNC.gov/roads. We are updating this webpage weekly, and we will continue to do so. We want to make sure that people have the latest information available, so we'll encourage everybody to continue to follow our website. Any questions?
No, thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Council, at this time, we'll take about a four-minute break and allow those in the audience to leave if they'd like. Council, at this time, I would like to address item 5.0, which is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move...
Mr. Arp.
Thank you. I would move that we approve the agenda as published, except for item 7.03. I would recommend that this item be pulled to go back to the Parks and Recreation Committee for further review. for further review.
7.03 to go back to Parks Committee?
Yes, sir.
And then there was some interest in pulling 8.01 also, and taking that off the agenda. Is that in your motion as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If I need to restate that, I can restate that. So the motion would be to approve the agenda as published, with the exceptions of item 7.03, which would be pulled to go back to the Parks and Recreation Committee for review, and item 8.01, which would be pulled in totality.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protim. Is there discussion? Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by members present. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't turn on the lights. Sorry, Jay. Madam Attorney.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I was trying to follow the proposed amendment by Councilmember Arp, and I think he's referring to 7.02 and not 3.
You know what? You are correct. 7.02.
And then, just for clarification, this item was set for a public hearing, so would the interest be to proceed with the public hearing and then take no action on those two items?
Yeah, I'm okay with proceeding with the public hearing. So let me, do I need to go back and amend that motion, Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir. For the record, please.
Okay. So I would amend my motion to reflect that we approve the agenda as published, with the exception of item, with the exception of items 7.02 and item 8.01. 7.02 would be pulled to go back to the Parks and Recs Committee for further review, and then item 7.03, which is the public hearing. Is that correct?
No, sir. Let's try it this way. So the proposal would be to remove item 8.01, which relates to the 911.
Right.
Then 7.02 and 7.03 are public hearings. So my suggestion was to hold the public hearings, and then on that specific one that you want to go back to Parks and Rec at the conclusion of the public hearing, that would be the recommended action for that piece.
Okay. So let me try that again. All right, so we approved the agenda as published, with the exception of item 8.01, which would be removed, and items 7.02 and 7.03, that we move ahead with the public hearing, and then subsequent to the public hearing, that it would come back to the Parks and Recreation Committee for further review.
Yes, but at this time, all you need to do is 8.01. And so when we get to 7.02 and 3, that would be the motion at that time.
Can we make the motion at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
I think we got it.
Mayor Protim.
Well, Councilmember Arp, since I seconded that, I would have to amend that, but I have a question about this, because I think part of the concern was that the committee hadn't done a portion of what they need to do to discuss some of this business park district with council. So is it appropriate to leave this item on here to be voted on? I mean, I don't mind having a debate up and down, but if we're going to amend it, is it coming off or staying on? I'm not clear.
I think the, Madam Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the intent is when we get to that item, that we would make that recommendation at that point.
That's correct.
So the recommendation will be made to go ahead and conduct the public hearing, but to send it all back to the committee for further review.
But aren't we still proceeding with a public hearing for item that we hadn't discussed? I can't support that.
On 7.2, you have several different pieces that are part of the larger item, and so...
So theoretically, could it be split up to have the public hearing on the items that we are okay with, and the other item go back to the committee so that it can be worked out?
You could certainly do that. I think our interest was because it had been advertised as a public hearing, and there may be people here who have signed up to speak, that we would allow them the opportunity to speak, and then council could-
That's easy enough to find out. Ms. Jane, we have speakers for this item?
Mr. Mayor Protim, since there's no one here to speak either in favor or in opposition, we could simply open and close the public hearing, and then at that point, make the recommendation that it go back to the Parks and Recs Committee, as we, I think we all want to do.
Right, I understand, but this is a part of a process that would normally be, so in other words, we wouldn't have another public hearing at the time when it's time to make the decision, so.
Well, we can, we certainly have the ability, if we want to have another public hearing, we could do that.
That's correct.
We've got discussion on the item, Mr. McDougal.
Certainly, we've discarded the people at home that may be watching us, that may want to hear that, so I would say that we need to at least have a public hearing and have staff to do whatever it is that they normally do in making their presentation.
All right, so we don't, we can't-
I don't know y'all having a private conversation, the rest of us don't know what's going on, so.
Well, getting ready to tell you. So there's not a second on the motion. Mr. Mayor Protim has withdrawn his-
Well, I think we need to clarify. That's what he's saying. So procedurally, we were going to do something on an item that we had not made a decision on. I understand they're saying that it's not for action purposes, but they want to have a public hearing before council and the committee. The committee has come back to council for Parks and Rec, and for council to make a decision about the business park piece of this. That's the only thing we were debating about, the business park district redesignation. And I thought it was a little premature to have that discussion before council and committee got a chance to work it out. That was my point.
I'll second it.
Okay, great. So Councilmember Jensen has seconded, so we can continue discussion. Mr. Crisp, I saw your light first, then Mr. Moan.
Suppose of 8.1, and then come back to 7.2. 8.1 is easy. If the motion was made to remove it from the agenda, we need to vote on that. And then we could have another motion on 7.2.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp.
Which might include a second hearing.
I think procedurally, since we already noticed a public hearing, that when we get to 7.01, 7.02, 7.03, 7.04, staff will give a presentation like they always do. After staff presentation, you open and close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, if a recommendation to put all or part of 7.02 back to staff, because not all of it applies to the Parks and Rec Committee, only the one item that I sent out to all you this weekend does, the rest of them don't. It's a, it's a group that were numbered, one through whatever it was, five or six, seven. And I just had a question about the first one. So I think procedurally, that's probably what we should do.
All right, so if I understand the motion and the second, that is to remove item 8.01 and to address 7.02 when we get there. Great. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, counsel, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Sometimes we make things more complicated than it should be. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. Counsel, I will entertain a motion and go to Mayor Protim Colvin.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item 6.014 for a separate discussion and separate action by counsel. Just had a few questions about that.
Second.
Okay, that's the motion to approve the consent agenda, minus 6.014, seconded by Councilmember Moan. Any further discussion? Counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mayor Protim, 06, 0, I'm sorry, 6.014.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I asked for a separate explanation and discussion of this. This is regarding the city's request to do bond financing as a repayment for renovations rendered on City Hall and proposed renovations for the first floor. It's a discussion we had at the last council meeting, and Ms. Spivey didn't have the opportunity to gather some of the information that I had a question about. And so before it was consented, I kind of wanted to see if you had an opportunity to gather that. So one of the biggest questions were, you explained to us that there are multiple closings, the way that this is structured, that the third floor renovations have been complete. Part of this ask of bond financing is to pay the city back for money that they've done these renovations with, to go back into the general fund. And then there would be a portion of that used for new renovations for the first floor. Because you're closing multiple loans, one of my questions is, how many separate closings do you anticipate in this transaction? That's the first part of it. And secondly, how much does each one of those closings, will they cost the taxpayers in closing costs, bond fees, attorney fees, et cetera?
Okay. The, to answer to your first question, is the number of financings depends on the number of projects. So the third floor was a separate project. That's the one we're requesting to reimburse ourselves from loan proceeds now. If the first floor and the second floor are both separate projects again, then that would be three financings. If the first floor and the second floor renovations were combined, it would be two financings. Did I answer your first question?
Yes, ma'am, I understand. And how much was each closing, roughly?
The estimate for the first one from our, the estimate that was provided from our financial advisor was eighty-five thousand dollars. The, as you can see on the screen, the first six of those items included in his estimate have been defined, with bond council being thirty thousand, local co-bond council being five thousand three hundred, the lender's attorney being fifteen thousand, the financial advisor being twenty thousand. The LGC application was twelve hundred fifty dollars, and the trustee will be fifteen hundred dollars. That's, the trustee, part of that, half of that is upfront, and then part of it is every year that the financing stays in place. You can see at the bottom, there is eleven thousand nine fifty that is yet undetermined. If, if none of those things I've listed, plus anything else, come to fruition, then the amount of the closing cost would be reduced by that amount.
About eleven thousand.
Right, so somewhere between seventy-three thousand and eighty-five thousand.
So roughly, best-case scenario, this would cost a hundred and seventy-five thousand in closing costs, worst-case, about a quarter million dollars, two fifty-five or so, if you did three closings, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Do you want to make a motion? Okay, counsel, the floor is open. Mr. Moan.
Looking at our council action memo under the options, I'd like to make a motion, option one, adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the financing of renovations and improvements to City Hall through the issuance of a note, of an issuance, you know, not to exceed one-point-nine million dollars, limited obligation bond, and the execution and delivery of certain documents.
Second.
All right, heard Mr. Wright for a second. Motion by Mr. Moan. Is there discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is a seven to three vote, voting against Councilmember Arp, Robertson, and Colvin. Those in favor, Councilmember Crisp, Councilmember Deviere, Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Jensen, Hurst, McDougal, and Moan. At this time, item 7.0 is the public hearings. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public hearing will be limited to three minutes each. Time used in response to questions by council members will not be counted against the speaker. And folks wishing to speak should have signed up with a clerk prior to tonight's meeting. When you hear your name called by the clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the lights located on the podium change from green to yellow, that's an indication that you have thirty seconds remaining to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. And again, due to restrictions, we ask that you abide by the time. So item 7.01 is the public hearing for the 2017-2018 annual budget. Mr. Doug Hewitt.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're gathered here for a public hearing and to receive comments from residents regarding the annual operating budget for, proposed for 2017-2018. The notice and advertising of the public hearing was published in the Fayetteville Observer on Thursday, May 11th, as well as the documents that I'll be covering tonight have been available on the city's website and in the clerk's office as well since I presented the proposed budget to you on May 8th. In preparing the budget this year, Mayor, members of council, we took a look at the council's top council priorities. Your top priorities are economic development, public safety, beautification and greenways, infrastructure investment, affordable housing, and parks and recreation. We use those to guide us in preparing the budget. Additionally, we looked to your strategic plan. Specifically, we looked at your six goals that you have, and tried to orient our proposed budget around these six goals. And those goals are goal one, safe and secure community; two, diverse and viable economy; three, high-quality built environment; goal four, desirable place to live, work, and recreate; goal five, sustainable organizational capacity; and finally, goal six, resident engagement and partnership. The proposed budget provides two-hundred-and-thirty-million dollars of total expenditures across all funds, with a hundred-and-seventy-million dollars in the general funding expenditures. This spending plan represents a one-point-nine percent increase in the general fund over FY17 adopted budget. The tax rate to support the budget is recommended at fifty-two-six-six cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, as, which it represents a two-point, zero-point-two-seven-one cent increase over last year's tax rate of point-four-nine-nine-five. The proposed tax rate is calculated to be revenue-neutral, following the county ride revaluation of real property as of January 1st, 2017. Looking at the preparation of this year's budget, probably the largest driver that we had, and most important factor impacting our revenues, was the revaluation. The budget is based upon an estimated revenue-neutral rate, again, of fifty-two-point-six-six cents, and the current tax rate is forty-nine-point-nine-five cents. The central business tax district rate is recommended to remain at ten cents, and the Lake Valley Drive MSD tax rate is recommended to increase from thirty-nine-point-four cents to thirty-three-point-six cents. The purpose of revaluation is to reestablish equity among all properties that have, may have appreciated or depreciated in value at different rates since the county's last revaluation eight years ago, and it is required by the state- revaluation eight years ago, and it is required by the state of North Carolina. Some additional revenue highlights that we have. The residential solid waste fee is recommended to increase by four dollars to forty-eight dollars per year. The fee adjustment is needed to fund the increase in the recycling collection contract, which increased two dollars and forty-three cents per year, as well as a fee adjustment needed to offset, offset declining revenues from sale of collected recyclables of ninety-two cents, namely, continuing to recycle glass. The stormwater fee is recommended to increase by fifty cents per month, per equivalent residential unit or house, to four dollars and twenty-five cents per month, or an annual equivalent of six dollar increase, or fifty-one dollars per year. As the council knows, we held work sessions on May eleventh and on May eighteenth, and we're scheduled to have the remaining work session with you this Thursday on May twenty-fifth. We're here tonight, again, to receive comment on the proposed budget, and we hope to work with the city council to move toward adoption of the budget, the CIP, the TIP, and the strategic plan, as well as the fee schedule on Monday, June the twelfth. And at this time, Mayor, Members of Council, would invite you to ask citizens to come forward to comment on the proposed budget as presented to you.
We do have a couple of questions, Mr. Hewitt, of you first. Uh, Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Hewitt, go back to your revenue highlights. It says, Lake Valley Drive Municipal Service District Tax Rate Recommended to Increase
To, from, it should be, yeah, that is.
What is it currently, thirty-three point six?
It's thirty-three point six cents, yes, sir.
The way it's worded there is kind of...
Yeah, it is odd.
Could have been worded a little better there, so it doesn't mislead the public. They show that the current tax rate is thirty-three point six, recommended to increase to thirty-nine point four. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mayor Protim?
Mr. Hewitt, two questions. One, on your revenue highlights, you showed an increase in the rate to stay revenue neutral for the overall budget from forty-nine to fifty-two. And from Lake Valley, the Councilmember Crisp just pointed out, the Central Tax District didn't have to have any adjustments to stay revenue neutral?
No, sir. One of the things that the council, we've discussed, is that you're required to publish the revenue neutral tax rate, you're not required to adopt it. And so the Central Business Tax District, the revenue neutral rate is ten point three-six cents, but we are recommending that the rate remain the same at ten cents, and not increase by the point three-six tenths of percentage.
Okay, so what, the rest of the organization just absorbed the difference that it needed to do to bring in the shortfall of revenue?
Well, there was, based upon what we provide in services and generating, I think the Central Business Tax District has proposed to generate a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in FY eighteen. The point three-six cents was, was a negligible amount on that amount, and, but it, again, it is, we're recommending rate is ten cents, not the revenue neutral rate of ten point three-six cents.
Okay, and the last question, you said that we had a fee increase on solid waste because of, one of the, one of the issues is that we're making up for decline of revenues in glass recycling.
Yes, sir.
Any reason why we're still recycling glass, if we're losing money?
Yes, sir. When we originally started the recycling program some time ago, which it was started initially by citizens, who petitioned the city council at that time to start a citywide recycling program, one of the things that we had to do was to try to educate people about what could be recycled and what couldn't be recycled. We have a vested interest, not only in trying to make sure that the sale of glass helps offset the recycling contract, but every ounce that we're able to keep out of the county landfill extends the life of the landfill. And as we shared with members of council during the work sessions and some of the small group meetings as well, asking citizens now to remove glass from the recycling waste stream, recycling stream, once we have them recycling it, would end up where some would still put it in, and some would not. But again, if the ultimate goal is to extend the life of the landfill, we felt that the offset of ninety-two cents in the fee was one that we'd recommend to council to continue recycling glass. And we never know, the market for glass may pick up in the future, likely it won't. Everything now is from the water bottles and to food containers or plastic as well. But that was the reason that we are recommending that the fee adjustment include an offset for declining revenues in glass.
Last point, you think we can hire Pine Forest to help us with recycling?
I tell you what, we could definitely bring them on. They're able to make twenty thousand dollars, and, and that, that is most impressive, most impressive.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Mr. McDougal?
And certainly, Mr. City Manager, I think you need to note that some of that recycling is actually mandatory that we recycle a, a certain percentage mandated by the state for us to do that. It's not something that we're just doing as a nicety.
Yes, there are certain things which we can no longer bury in the landfill. That is absolutely correct, sir.
Mr. Hewitt, on the stormwater fee, how much do we currently have in the stormwater fund?
Mayor, I don't have that off the top of my head, but we could probably find it, if that's an interest before the public hearing. Let me grab my book.
And the other question, while we're looking up numbers, is what will the increase, the, the dollar amount of the increase provide for us?
We have, as we shared with the council last Thursday, have come up with a five-year plan of projects.
Just, those two questions I ask are the only numbers I need, please.
Okay. Um, so the, the first one was, what, how much money we have in stormwater fund?
Currently in the stormwater fund. What's in the bank account?
Mayor, we may have to get back to you on that. That was not one that I think I can find.
Well, certainly, somebody can tell me what the increase in the fee will generate.
Yes, sir, where's that?
Ms. Brawls, you have an answer to either of those questions? Come to the microphone, please.
Each quarter generates about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so just right around nine hundred thousand dollars is projected for FY eighteen for the fifty cent increase.
A short of a million dollars.
And so what we have on the screen, Mayor, Members of Council, and the public, is what we had shown the council on Thursday, which is the proposed projects that we have, if approved, with the fifty cent increase in the stormwater fee, going from FY eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Right. But, Mr. Hewitt, how much do we have in the bank account right now in the stormwater fee, the stormwater fund?
Again, Mayor, I don't know that I have that with me tonight.
Okay, so we can discuss that Thursday. All right, let's start the public hearing, please. Madam Clerk, please call first speaker.
Our first speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinhold.
Welcome, Mr. Reinhold.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the Fayetteville City Council, good evening. My name is Jerry Reinhold, five sixteen, Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. This evening, in contrast to last year, I'm speaking against the proposed budget. On several occasions, Mr. Matthews has spoken about the issue with the Rose Hill Dam, which was breached several decades ago. And the thing that I find disturbing is the lack of the inclusion of some sort of a, a, a budget line to provide some engineering study to maybe reexamine that. Because once the, once the five-hundred-year flood damage from Hurricane Matthew is long gone, we're still going to have flooding downtown from what Mr. Matthews studies have shown. And I believe that in our, it's in our long-range benefit to take and look at correcting that problem. On the eleven items that were listed, individual items on the budget, there was only one item that went down, and that was the Lake, Lake Valley Drive MSD. And then when you look into the final, or internal workings of the budget, this brings us back to previous discussions that we've had, in that it appears that one of the top council priority items that was missing from the charts was your objective to protect every program from cuts and grow the size of government. Because the Lake Valley project is the only one, Lake Valley MSD is the only one that I see where there were any cuts made. And, you know, and I've spoken before, it seems like there could just be something that, some obsolete or bygone era project or program that would be probably destined for the trap sheep, and then free up funds to go from some other things. You know, it's ironic, there's a greater chance of getting cut by a piece of paper in my hand than seeing a cut in government spending. And I would certainly hope that in future projects or future budget years, we'd probably do a little bit better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
We'll close the public hearing on item seven point zero one. We'll go to seven point zero two. Mr. Scott Schuford.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I, I know there is an intent to postpone action on at least a portion of this. Do you want me to give you a staff presentation tonight on the, the different items, or?
Well, no, sir. I think we should probably just jump into the public hearing, let the committee hear it, and then bring it back to council for...
Because there may be changes to it, absolutely.
Correct. I've also, how did this end up on the agenda, Mr. Schuford? But without going to the committee first, any idea?
It's a zoning amendment. It goes to the planning commission for their review through our processes.
How about the one item specifically for the, the sports complex?
It's not legally required to go before that board. Didn't realize it would be something they would be interested in.
Hmm, interesting what we'd consider. Mr. Moan?
I would like to hear the entire presentation. I don't work for the Parks and Rec Committee. We've never put a zoning based on a speculation to any of our committees. The Parks and Rec Committee is not the proper place to receive a recommendation on a business park, which is a citywide zoning. It's not the military business park, it's business park, BP. It does not belong with the committee. Everything staff done up to this point is correct.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
I was just stating my opinion, Mr. Moan. All right, Counsel, what's your pleasure? Uh, Mr. Arp, I think you had asked that this item be pulled, actually. So, do you have some discussion?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and just for the record, I don't think the Parks and Recreation Committee asked for or directed that this zoning be brought to us or to the council, period. But, but since it has, I, I would move that we go ahead and approve seven point zero two as published, with the exception of the zoning as it relates to the Business Park District, and that that be sent back to the baseball, or correction to the Parks and Recreation Committee for review.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? No?
No, sir.
Thank you. So, Mr. Arp's made a motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Discussion, Mr. Colvin?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify something. I think we got a little mixed up. My concern was that I didn't want us to put the cart before the horse and deciding a location before the council as a whole had that conversation, because there were some areas in, Mr. Matthews brought up, that may have some potential over in the Shaw Mill Road area for some of this. And I just didn't, I didn't want this process to preempt the council's decision on where things are going, and to assume that it was headed to one particular place before we've heard it, because I'm not on the P and R, Parks and Rec Committee either. And so I'm interested to, for us to debate it, and whatever council's pleasure is, but I don't want any assumptions out there that it's going to one place or the other before, you know, we as a whole have an opportunity to talk about it. So, you know, I, I just wanted to clarify my position, you know, maybe that wasn't what, where you were.
Yes, and in the executive summary, the summary table, it, in our agenda, speculation about a recreation center at the military business park, and the existing developers' need for clarity such that a use will not impact the existing agreement. I agree, it's a cart before the horse. Right now, number one, does not need to be discussed, because we have not identified a location. So I don't want to inadvertently put something in a business park, or an exception in a business park, which will apply across the entire city, when the military business park may, I love the location. We don't need to do a citywide...
I think we're saying the same thing.
Right. But, it says, go, I've heard it tonight, go back to the Parks and Rec Committee. It doesn't belong there. The Parks and Rec Committee has no business hearing that individually. That is a collective council, because this is not specific to Parks and Rec. It's specific to business parks, whether it be military business park, whether it be a business park we did for the Hope Six, we're trying to do, a business park. So if it gets discussed, it should be discussed with council, and not a baseball committee, or a gateway committee, because there could be a business park on a gateway. That's not where this needs to be discussed. That's just, that was my point. It doesn't need to go to a committee.
Okay, all right.
Let's just strike number one, and adjust, and go ahead and approve number two through seven, and I'm good.
Mr. Crisp, then Mr. McDougal, then Mr. Arp.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I got a problem with this whole thing, seven point zero two. There's just too many moving parts in there that have been lumped together, all right? We're talking about a business park district, we're talking, that's one, the multi-axle trailer parking in residential areas, we're talking about residential densities in neighborhood commercial districts, we're talking about expiration terms, a certificate of appropriateness. This whole thing needs to come back to council. We need to break this out and act on each of these in a separate vein. I'm with Mr. Moan concerning the business park. I got some reservations about multi-axle trailer parking, and it hasn't been clarified to my satisfaction yet. Residential densities in neighborhood commercial districts, I think I understand that. Why are we changing, changing the expiration terms of certificates of appropriateness? I thought they had to do it in, what, one year, Mr. Schuford, or what?
No, sir, six months. We're trying to give them a little bit more time.
Is that been to the...
Okay, I just, my point is, I don't think, I'm not ready to approve any part of this tonight. I got too many questions on these parts. I think it needs to be broken out in the separate entities, specific parts of the code, and that's, that's me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just, a little bit concerned about this multi-axle trailer parking, and... And I think we talked about dual axle, but multi means two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? I mean, I don't know how many axles you can put on a, on a trailer, but we use the term multi. And I think the other night, you talked about two.
Yes, sir, we did.
And now we at multi. So, you know, you know, I have a concern about being able to see down the street when I walk out the front of my house or, you know, and if you start putting stuff out there that's got triple axles and I can't see down the street. I mean, and a lot of this is about safety and concern for our neighborhoods if we are backing a lot of stuff, so. And I thought the other night, we talked about it, but I don't remember, you know, I was expressing my concern in the work session. So to see it on here tonight and saying multi-axle, and maybe it's just a language thing, somebody wrote it up as multi, and it just should have been dual axle. Because I think we used, I think we were talking about dual axle, weren't we not?
We, we were talking about dual axles, and that may have been my mistake to refer to them as dual axles. But the, the code does say multi-axle.
And I, I just have a real concern about that going in our, in our residential neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Mr. Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to withdraw my motion, and at the pleasure of council, I'll resubmit another motion. Is that okay with you, Ms. Jensen? You second?
I, I second that.
Okay, thank you. So I would move that the council table item seven point zero two, send it back to staff with the guidance to break this item out into distinct separate items to be discussed and considered by the council at a future date.
Second.
Mr. McDougal, second. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Moan?
Yes, when city council asks staff for these type of amendments, to be, come to council twice a year, spring and fall, and this is the spring version. So is it more, you have the summary table, but then you have the each one written, you know, with red text corrections and stuff? So do, are we changing our guidance where these become seven separate agenda items versus coming to council twice a year with text, code, cleanup type amendments? Our guidance was twice a year, spring and fall, so this is the spring addition of total of seven. In the past, we would do one text amendment this month, one text amendment next month, and we're doing multiple agenda items at multiple meetings. And so we're like, hey, you know, unless something's serious, time-sensitive, but I'm going to agree with your motion tonight, but when we have that discussion, let's figure out. I mean, the guidance back in January of this year was twice a year, spring, batch them together, and come to council. So let's just have that whole discussion one more time, and I'll, I'll support your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item seven point zero three is code amendment aligning section thirty dash two point C, eighteen of the UDO. Mr. Shuford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a companion item to the, the item you approved under consent agenda with regard to the adjustments we're making as a result of general assembly action to get us into alignment with their ramp regulations. And because this one requires a, procedurally requires a public hearing, so it's coming to you as a, as not a consent item as the other items were, but as a public hearing. It's fairly simple. This is the, the language that is currently in the code, and this is what the amendment would do. It would strike that, and it's a one-sentence amendment. That adjustment will allow our code enforcement folks to follow the same process for all the different violations that they're involved with.
Mr. Crisp?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The question, Mr. Shuford and Madam Attorney, the Board of Adjustment had certain inherent legal authorities. We've done away with the Board of Adjustments, I'm told, or combined it into zoning or planning?
It is a part of the zoning commission.
Okay, but the zoning commission does not have the same authority to hear redress as the Board of Adjustments did.
Mr. Crisp, let me, let me, let me help you with that. Let me help you with that. The, the process is that the, when the zoning commission hears a variance, that they're acting as though they are the Board of Adjustment.
We didn't appoint them as the Board of Adjustment. We appointed a Board of Adjustment.
You adjusted the code to essentially assign the duties of the Board of Adjustment to the zoning commission, and that is the process that we're attempting to use. And we, we put them in the zoning commission because we felt the zoning commission was the right place, because they're used to doing quasi-judicial hearings through the consideration of special use permits.
Well, the issue here is if someone appeals to the zoning commission, and the zoning commission, in their adjudication process denies that appeal, that person can then go to court, right, Mrs. McDonald?
Yes, when they're acting as a Board of Adjustment, it is quasi-judicial.
But I'm back to the question. I don't remember. Now, somebody tell me when this council approved the Board of Adjustment being added into the responsibility of the zoning commission. Did we do that? And when did we do that, Mr. Shuford?
We certainly did do that. It was part of a effort to consolidate our boards. We, we consolidated several boards into the Board of Appeals. We consolidated the, the zoning commission and Board of Adjustment into a single board because we were having so few variances. I, I don't know the exact dates, but we can certainly provide that to you.
But you, you are satisfied we're on legal ground, Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir.
With putting the responsibilities of the Board of Adjustment, which was quasi-judicial, into zoning, which was not quasi-judicial?
That's correct. No different than the council sits from time to time as a quasi-judicial board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is a public hearing. Mayor, just wanted to remind you of that. I don't think anyone signed up, but they need to open and close it if you haven't done so already.
Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have no speakers.
Thank you. Mr. Shuford? Counsel, no further discussion. I'll entertain a, entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Seconded. It's by Mr. McDougal, seconded by Mr. Hurst. Any further discussion? Okay, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Seven point zero four is the approval of a resolution to adopt the resiliency element as part of a comprehensive plan. Mr. Shuford?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is part of our comprehensive plan update, and it's kind of a timely one. After Hurricane Matthew, it became apparent that we had a variety of issues. We also know that we have some economic vulnerabilities that are inherent to our, our area because of lack of diversification and that sort of thing. And we do have social equity issues that, that deserve some, some special attention. So in effect, we've got the proverbial three-legged stool here with the natural hazards, the economic and social issues. We've defined resiliency for our community as the ability of a community to recover quickly, fairly, and transparently from an internal or external challenge affecting public safety, economic well-being, or social equity. There's a variety of purpose statements in, in the element that I will not go into. So some of the key points here in terms of those components of resilience for natural hazards, we've discovered the hard way that we have a number of single-access subdivisions that, that require some evaluation as to their vulnerability. We have the ability through some, some potential grants to enhance our flood forecasting ability. I think that's a worthy goal. Obviously, economic diversification's important, and we probably need to, to work with our military partners to have a less items on base that compete with our, our commercial and residential development off-base. We do need to, to look at how vulnerable our lower-income areas are and do some community outreach there under social equity. These maps illustrate the fact that while we do have a major flood plain associated with the Cape Fear River, we have an awful lot of creeks and, that feed into the river, and, and so we have a hydrological vulnerability that's pretty significant. The, this map on the, the left side of the screen illustrates subdivisions with only one access over ten acres in size, or some hundred and some of those. Total number of single-access subdivisions, regardless of size, is probably in the three-hundred range. So it's, it's an issue, many of these, there's not an issue with a single access, but where you have the, the potential for a, the access point to cross water, that's where we saw we had some problems during Matthew. So the element does suggest that we did some work in those areas. We also looked at where the storm damage occurred, and, and looking at this map, the little green dots represent areas where we immediately after the storm observed physical damage to, to structures, and it seems that that's fairly evenly distributed across the city. But when you, you drill down and you start looking at the red dots, those areas where there was a fifty percent or more damage seemed to be in racial minority areas and also lower-income areas illustrated with this map. The, the Waterless Street damage here is an area that's seventy-five to a hundred percent African-American. So that's, that's why we've raised this as a concern that we need to, to address. Last but not least, we have an implementation matrix of a number of items. Most of them, as you can see, are geared towards natural hazards, but there are economic and social equity components as well. The, this item has gone to our planning commission recently in May, and they unanimously recommended it come to you for consideration for approval. I believe we advertised this as a public hearing. I don't think it's going to make any difference, because I don't think we have any speakers. But if you'll open and close the public hearing, Mayor, that will keep us procedurally correct and be glad to entertain any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, I meant to look at the map and figure out exactly where Waterless Street is, and I know, I know, I just can't, I can't see it right now, but it's right downtown, and it's kind of amazing. Oh, yeah, it's kind of amazing that it would be called Waterless Street, and it takes on the most water.
Exactly.
Of any, of any street in our community, you know, in our city. So maybe we need to change the name of that street? That might be something we need to, we need to look at. Yeah.
All right. Mr. Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Shuford, this, this plan that you've put together, have we synced this with our stormwater plan?
No, sir, there's probably not a need to sync it with our stormwater plan, because while we, they're interrelated, they're, the stormwater plan is, is existing and is on its own, and, and there's not a need to, to make these in alignment, because there's not a great deal of effort in that area in this plan to address stormwater components, because we felt we were covered very well by the stormwater plan.
So, so all the flooding, just, just so I understand, so all the flooding on the slide that you showed and the impact with the creeks and all going into the Cape Fear River, based, based on what you're presenting, there's, there's no impact that's associated with stormwater? Is that what I understood you to say?
No, sir, I don't think that's what I was saying. What I was saying is that this plan does not supplant or in any way especially complement the stormwater plan, because that plan has got specific projects and components there. We do have items in here that, that are commonsensical, such as develop a comprehensive stream basin approach to stormwater management. That will be something we'll talk to you as we go through the, the implementation of these different things. Clearly, we've got the inventory of single-access subdivisions and reduced vulnerabilities there to be done by the engineering and infrastructure department. It's something that is related to that as well. But in terms of the need to, to assure some sort of alignment from this fairly general and broad plan with the, the stormwater program is, is probably not necessary.
Well, I, I might would take a different view with that, because when I look at your, when I look at your bullets, number, the number three bullet, multidisciplinary approach to develop a regional water use plan, that's talking about reaching across all the disciplines, establish a dam management policy and develop a capital improvement plan. I mean, all our stormwater runs into these reservoirs. I don't know, I just think you might want to have some synchronization with the stormwater plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Coleman.
Couple of things, Mr. Shuford. One, you said this was a part of an overall comprehensive plan. Can you hit that a little bit? What com, what comprehensive plan are you referring to?
Well, it's the, the city's comprehensive plan that you have asked staff to go through and do a strategic approach to it.
The comprehensive land use plan that we put a couple of budgets ago?
Yes, sir, and...
How's this coming along? How's that coming?
It's, it's coming along quite well. I think we probably would be through the, the Haymount Study Area, but we were able to bring the Urban Land Institute Technical Advisory Panel in again. They've given us some great input on that. We're near bringing you the, the medical village plan for out near the, the Cape Fear, excuse me, the Veterans Clinic out west. That's working out well with, with a potential project that we're seeing that would provide some housing for homeless veterans in the area that would be a natural fit for, for having them near medical facilities. There's also some plans by Cape Fear Tech to, to do some institutional development out there that would be a fit. So that one's coming along. I think you'll probably see that after your July break. It'll probably go to our planning commission in June, or certainly in July, and then come to you in August. So that one's moving forward. We expect to get the Urban Land Institute's report in the next couple of weeks. When we have that, we'll be in a position to, to modify the Haymount Plan to bring that forward. It does not appear Shaw Heights is going to come into the city at any time in the near future, so we probably won't do a, a land use study of that, but we need to go into Massey Hill and Bonny Doon as our next areas of study. But we promised that we would have it done for you in fiscal year eighteen. It looks like that's likely to happen.
All right. And finally, I don't know if this is for you or for someone else in the organization. Under the economic tab, I see a couple of areas that I am kind of concerned about. One is it says, encourage the military to minimize on-base commercial development that competes with the local businesses. And two, encourage the military to minimize off-base military-only residential development that competes with local construction industry. How's that coming? Because it's got continuing as the status. So who, who's negotiating those, those areas of concern on behalf of the city?
Well, if you look over under responsible parties or parties, we've got you and the Economic and Business Development Department in there. We're probably with the consolidation...
We're supposed to be negotiating it, then I...
Well, well, I think what we would do is, is come to you with, with, for policy guidance. And then once we did that, then the, the department would move forward and bring these things in. You'll see, too, that the, the fact that it's continuing is a case where we expect that to be something that we will...
Let me redirect that to Mr. Hewitt. Mr. Hewitt, when would this be an item of discussion for the council, since it's got us listed as a participant?
Well, Mayor Protim, thank you. The...
Well, Mayor Protim, thank you. One of the first things that I think that we have to do, as Scott said, we have to come back and we have to educate ourselves about how decisions are made on Fort Bragg and what their timetable is for those decisions. Some of the housing changes that they have built all the way as far out as Linden Oaks and other places, whether they have an abundance of housing or not, those decisions were not ones which were made, you know, one or two years. They make those decisions multiple years out. We see that as well with some of the changes, the building projects such as the new hotel, the movie theaters, and all the other quarters. And so, I think the first one is that we, as a community, need to... But to answer your question, we'd probably have to come back to you sometime in the fall, whenever we've had an opportunity to sit down with our counterparts and really figure out what their planning schedule would be for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Devere.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Shuford, for presenting this, just, I guess, maybe directed to the city manager, but looking at the strategies and timelines, I guess it's kind of aligned with some of the other questions you've heard tonight. But are we going to work to align this with the strategic plan and the TFAs to make sure that we're getting some movement on these things and it's not a report that's just going to sit on the shelf?
Well, that's... Go ahead.
And it looks like we already are when I look at FY19, FY18. I'm assuming those are beginning to line up with our TFAs for those years, excuse me, our targets for action for the year as well as our overall strategic plan. So, that's what we'll begin to see.
If you approve this, then obviously we'll add, for example, the update to the City Fayetteville Sustainability Plan as a project for you in that fiscal year, and it'll be brought up as part of both the strategic planning effort and also your budget.
Okay. My second question is, in the discussions about economic development, as the team was going through this, in years previous, there's been a discussion about a disparity study. Was that discussed again, and is that something that we're looking at doing?
It is not part of the discussion for this particular element.
It was not discussed at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Devere. Mr. Wright.
Yes, Mr. Shuford. Thank you for your report here. I have a couple of questions for you. Looking at the chart here, we're talking about enhanced understanding of public safety personnel about the vulnerabilities of particular populations in the areas of the city to natural hazards. What are you referring to when you talk about particular populations and how that... Can you talk about that a little bit?
I sure can, and I'll give you an example. I think it's probably the best way to answer your question. Studies have shown that when you have a heat wave or a flooding risk, that oftentimes people in low-income neighborhoods are reluctant to leave their property because they may not have insurance for the items inside the house, even if they do have home insurance. If they're renting, clearly, they probably do not have renters' insurance. And so, we would suggest that what we do is work with our public safety folks to make sure that they understand there'll be that natural reluctance to leave and for there to be some assurance that there'll be an effort to keep their property and their homes safe during the event that they're being evacuated from.
Okay. The next question I have is utilization of the FEMA advisory-based flood elevation map to better communicate flooding risk.
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
I can. This was something that was suggested to me by a hazards management professor, who said that FEMA has this program that allows a more easy-to-understand approach to the floodplain maps that are very helpful to the community, and he recommended we consider adding that to this list. So, what we would do is, again, work with FEMA to see what's involved with that and bring that forward for your consideration.
Okay. Can you go back to the map that showed the individual, I guess, residents, with the green dots on it?
If I can go back here, I'm going to escape and get to that particular one. This one right here or the one following?
This one right here.
Yes, sir.
Is this broken down in districts or this map?
We could certainly add council districts to this map. Let me explain what this is. Right after, the day after Hurricane Matthew, the... Let me bring it up a little bit larger size. Whoops, I'm sorry. Immediately after Hurricane Matthew, staff from our zoning office and also our permitting inspections department went out and began the process of identifying areas that sustained damage. And there's just, as you can see, we had over 600 properties that had some level of damage. And that level of damage could be a water line halfway up the house, or it could have been a tree that had fallen onto a roof. So, the intent there was to go out ahead of FEMA's arrival on the scene and have a snapshot of where the critical damage might be so that they could more fully deploy their resources. So, this is what that map represented. Later on, we determined that these areas in red were areas where we had damage that was more than 50% of the value of the structure. So, those were the areas that really...
Has this map been updated with the 50% damage areas?
Yes, sir.
What areas to your far left with the cluster of...
Right in here.
Residents to your far left?
Let's see.
Yeah, this area.
My cursor in the right area.
Uh-huh. What is that?
I believe that's Gates 4.
That's not Gates.
No.
That's next to Fort Bragg. Gates 4, south.
That must be...
District 7 and District 8.
That's District 7 and 8.
That's Lake Rim right there, the lake you're looking at.
Yeah.
So, Lake Rim, Rim Road, Hope Loop Road, Clifftale Road, Rayford Road is District 7 and 8.
You're right. And the reason I wanted to make mention of that because some of the hardest-hit areas were in District 7 and 8, and people are still misplaced right now with the elevation of homes having to be three feet off the ground.
Yes, sir.
That's prolonged. People are still misplaced, a lot of elderly people on fixed incomes. We just have a cluster right now of... And you're looking at the storm has been, I don't know how many months away, and people still don't have information that they need to feel comfortable with as how we can help them to get back to some type of normalcy in life, and I'm very concerned about that. So, now, if we... And you may mention that a lot of the worst-hit areas were those in low areas, which is more poverty-stricken and more the black communities, African-American communities per se, and the percentages are greater. There's nothing we can do about that as far as where they live, but if we can assist them, and I don't know, this plan that you have here looks like you have a lot of information, put a lot of time in getting this information put together. How is this going to help them at this time?
This particular plan probably won't help them at all, but what this plan does is gives us a chance. If there is a future event, then we will have a resiliency element on file that puts us in better shape for getting additional resources from the federal government as part of their flood hazard mitigation program. So, the advantage of this is to the future. We saw the pre-planning that we did when we adopted the county hazard, both the Hope and Cumberland County Hazard Mitigation Plan that was the actual FEMA document. We put in our plan, our part of that plan, that there would be an openness to an acquisition or elevation program after a flood, and some of our other communities did not do that, which opened us up to ways to help the people that we're talking about.
We did get some grant money for elevation?
Well, we have the study that has been done by Tetra Tech that identified approximately 600 properties that were in flood zones, and then outreach was done. I think we've had about 200 of those properties expressing interest in either buyout or elevation assistance. So, we're in the process of working that through FEMA's rules. The sad thing is, and Mr. Wright, this is true for any of these disasters, it's not Fayetteville-specific. It takes a very long time for FEMA to allocate the resources and act and actually get the money here. And I know we've made a lot of effort on the part of both staff and our elected officials to move things along, but it is a slow process, and I know it's very frustrating for the people involved.
It's very frustrating. I have just one more follow-up, which is mostly a comment, maybe, I don't know if you can do anything about this, but how true is it that the federal government cut 99% of the disaster relief funds coming to North Carolina?
I don't think that I can answer that in any sort of exhaustive way. I have heard that we've requested something approximating a billion dollars, and the federal government has offered us to date 6 million, but I'm sure that's going to change and get worked out.
We hope so.
It's just a question of timing.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford. Any idea how much money we've received on hurricane relief from the state?
I don't believe I have that answer, and I'm not sure we've got anybody here that can get that. But, oh, we do. Good. All right. Thank you for being here, Ms. Spivey.
Ms. Spivey, how much money have we gotten from the state of North Carolina for hurricane relief?
Approximately $500,000.
Great. And what was the total requested?
The total requested so far, let me check my notes. Mr. Mayor, we don't have it broken down that way, but we have about $17 million we expect to be eligible for. That's about 35 projects. We've submitted about 20. Most of those are still in review with FEMA, and so the information has not... It starts with the state, goes to FEMA, comes back to the state, and the information has not come back to the state yet.
So, you think we've submitted maybe $10 million?
We've... It's been less than that because a lot of our larger projects, like the dam projects, they're still waiting for bids and the engineering. I can get you that number tomorrow.
Okay. Just interested, but we've received $500,000.
We received $500,000 from the state and 1.5 million from FEMA.
I'm grateful for every dime we get, but the state's got a lot of work to do as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Mr. Devere.
Ms. Spivey, before you leave, just so that we're clear on that and we understand that, that means we submit them over time, so that's what we've submitted. So, we have a process by which we're going to submit all these projects.
That is correct. There is a process, and one of the action items today was to continue to retain our consultant through July 15th, and we have the projects set up where it is our expectation to have had them submitted to FEMA by July 15th. But it requires a process, and many of our projects require engineering studies upon which then we would do an RFP for the project, and then the bids have to come in, and then we can submit the project worksheet. So, especially the larger, more complicated ones.
We appreciate all your work. And, Mr. Manager, would you say then we're on task or we're on timeline to receive the dollars that we're anticipating we're going to receive based on the work that your staff has done?
Yes, sir. We're very pleased with the progress we've made, particularly with our partners, Tetra Tech. Like everything else, the proof is in the pudding, and we are really working very hard to make sure we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is so that we can get the maximum reimbursements, as well as Jay Reinstein and other staff members are working very hard to secure grant funding from the Golden Leaf Foundation, and to date, we've been successful by a couple million dollars.
Is that correct?
1.2 million, and we're asking for another 2. We hope to know about that in about a week.
1.2 so far, and 2.3 we hope to know about in another week. And then there's a third round, which we'll also be submitting applications for as well. But yes, sir, to the answer to your question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to the public hearing. Open the public hearing, Madam Clerk.
We have no speakers.
Close the public hearing. Counsel, I'll go to you for action. Mayor Protim.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. A move that we adopt the resolution or we approve a resolution to adopt the resiliency plan as presented tonight by staff.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Wright. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, oh, that's unanimous. All right, counsel, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.